Thank you, sir.
Okay. Madam Manager, I've got one minute after six.
Yes, sir.
So I'll call the March the first meeting of the Town Council to order, and the first item of business is pledge allegiance, and I've asked Ms. Mashburn if she would lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item of business, and we need to excuse Ms. McFray.
Yeah, motion.
Yes. Okay, I have the motion and a second, all in favor. Okay, the next item. Oh, okay. The next item is the approval, the adoption of the budget. Does anybody got anything they want to add or subtract to the agendas presented? If not, yes ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, if we could add, under the consent agenda, two items. One would be to forward telecommunications sign ordinance and minimum housing ordinance to the planning board to start review. And then the second item would be, under the consent agenda, would be a water and sewer allocation that was just passed out to you.
Okay. Any discussion for the board, anything you want to talk about? If not, yes ma'am.
On that consent agenda, where it's about the fire substation, does it not say on there that it's for the water plant up in the heading of it?
I do not know, Ms. Finance Officer, I think you prepared that one. Let's see. It may have, if it does, we'll be glad to change it.
Okay, I was gonna say, just change that before this.
Thank you.
Okay, was that a change?
It was a change just in the...
Oh, okay.
Not a change to add or taking thing off, but a typo on the fire department.
Oh, okay, all right, good. All right, you might want to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'm moved.
Mr. Culpepper.
Second.
And Mr. Horton. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Public session, I have two folks signed up, and as the ground rules is, we ask you to limit your comments to five minutes, and I actually keep a track of it. So Hannah and Alan Edwards were yonder. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi there, thank you. Want to take a small time to breathe?
Okay.
It's our purpose for talking to y'all tonight, and thank you, by the way, is for us to be allowed in the future to have on-premise malt beverage sales. We have been going through the motions of getting our ABC license for our new location. Everything's fine with unfortified wine, but we've run into like a little snag with on-premise malt beverage, meaning like we... There's nothing preventing us from selling malt beverage. Like, we can do that out of the cooler, someone can leave and take it home, and that's no problem. Like, there's no rules against that, but there's something in place. What we now know was something that was voted in an election in 2006 that allows malt beverage sales, but failed to include like eating establishments, food businesses, retail businesses. And you can reference Chapter 18B, 1001, at the ABC Commission. And there's basically like nothing we can do until, I guess, the next election, which I think is November, to just get that in place. Because we do have food sales, like we're not a full-on restaurant anymore at our new location, but we are selling groceries, like grab-and-go items, charcuterie boards, cheese plates, biscuits, certain things like that. So we do have food sales, we just don't have seating inside the new store, like all of the seating is outside. And we want for someone to be able to grab a six-pack of beer or whatever and go sit outside and enjoy it with their friends while they eat their charcuterie board, instead of going home and then coming back or bringing their own beer, because we would in turn like to sell it, because that's the whole point. So I think our end goal here would be to bring community up to our new place, really build on the food aspect of things, and just kind of have alcohol as like the secondary sales point, or of course, like revenue stream. It definitely helps, because a lot of people want to do that with their friends. And, you know, we wouldn't be open at night, it's not like any sort of party atmosphere by any means. It's basically for the purpose of just letting someone do that if they wanted to do that. Did you have anything?
I don't think so. I think the main thing that we'd like to see happen is that it be put on the ballot in November to include eating establishments, food businesses, and retail businesses to the existing malt beverage ordinance.
Because right now it's just for hotels and restaurants. That's our understanding, is that when it passed in 2006, those are the only two that were voted in.
And this is our second time dealing with the same ordinance. Actually, at the restaurant, we couldn't have beer because we only had 26 seats in the ordinance. The restaurant is defined as having 36 seats. So we decided this time maybe we'll see if we can't get it, you know, on the ballot and see if we can get it changed, because it seems like it's something that was just overlooked in the original.
Thank y'all, and we'll certainly work on that, will we? And talk to you about getting it on the referendum, because that's the way that the ordinance would have to come about.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank y'all, it's great to see y'all tonight.
Good to see you.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, the next person is Joe Zachary, old buddy of mine. Hey, Joe.
You really gonna give me just five minutes?
Huh?
Radio doesn't know what I'm...
You see this thing right here?
I know, you're good at that. I know most of you up there, and thank you for allowing me to come. I'm used to being coming and taking the news from the town board meetings, but this time I'm here as a resident in the town Franklin City limits. We are a resident on Meadowbrook Drive, 83 Meadowbrook Drive. If you turn up Wilkie Street, which is right across, of course, most of you know, from Radio Shack, you go straight up the hill, and Meadowbrook goes straight ahead. It doesn't turn, Wilkie Street makes a sharp turn, but Meadowbrook goes straight. And when you get onto Meadowbrook, at that point, there are no streetlights from one end to the far end of Meadowbrook. And it is getting a lot more vehicle traffic on that road. There's a lot more UPS, there's a lot more deliveries going on that road. We, our home is on the right, the first home on the right, is you turn. And when you turn on Meadowbrook, if you're following and you go straight, it makes the turn on Meadowbrook, and then a real sharp little curve right there. You cannot see, when you come onto that street, to Meadowbrook, you can't see around that turn, and if people are going pretty fast, which they are, and really, the street, there's no way to get kind of off on the right side or to the left, and so you're just running right into the people. And I have almost been run over, really run over. I'm talking about really hit in the last little bit. And honestly, the last time, believe it or not, and I appreciate the fact, because the police officers have been real good, because they've been kind of monitoring the traffic flow and all that, and the last time was almost by a town police car, and it scared him as much as it did me, trying to get out of the way, so it kind of proved the point. But also, on that street, there are apartment complexes on the end that are elderly residents. They like to get out and walk on that street. Also, in light of the fact that unfortunately, our town, many of the streets are seeing breaking and entering and theft. And I know, when I was up at the other end of the street before we bought this home, I had things stolen out of my car. I can't answer for anybody else. I just feel like that it is time that there are streetlights. I'm not saying how many, how many that you would, whoever looks at the situation feels necessary, but I'm very concerned that somebody's gonna get hit. Several of us have our dogs, and I would hate to see any of us lose our pet, because, you know... But I just would like to hope that you will look at the situation, and please, if it would be in the town's best interest, if you can say, "I do not know why that street doesn't have any streetlights on it." The upper side, which is Wilkie Street, has their streetlights, but there is not one from the time you get on Meadowbrook until you make the turn. So I'd appreciate it if you would consider that and give it some thought. Thank you very much.
We'll certainly do it, Joe. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
How was your trip the other day?
We delivered 24 pallets of water into Houston. We made 2,200 miles in four days, 2,200 miles. And we are working close all the time, with hearts with hands, in Asheville. And it looks like there's gonna be a concession trailer, a big picture through the concession trailer bought. And at any time, anybody wants to give anything individual-wise to a good organization, hearts with hands is good, and we're glad that we can give our time to go.
I just wanted to give you a shout-out for what y'all did.
Well, we don't need it. It's just that we're glad that we have the trucking experience.
You were the co-driver.
We're trucking experience, and now they seem to know that we also have the radio station business, or the city restaurant business, that we know how to do that, and we've done all of the catering, so now they're gonna put us out there on the road to the concession park.
Be careful.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Councilors, if I may, Ms. Zachary, before you get gone, we have had town crews go out there and look, and we do feel like there's a need. So we'll be presenting this to Town Council with an agreement for your proposal at your next board meeting, but she's absolutely right, there is a need in that community.
Right.
Thank you so much.
We looked at it the other day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zachary. All right. Okay, that was everyone that was signed up for public session. Now going to old business, we're going to bring up the disc golf. And Madam Manager, you want to take the lead on that?
Sure, Mr. Mayor and Council. So where we kind of left off with this was from last month, and I appreciate all three of the gentlemen being here again with us tonight. Seems like we were just here. But we just had the proposal from last month to look at partnering with the Franklin Disc Golf Course and turning the Whitmire property into a disc golf course with the understanding that it is removable at any time if the council wants to pursue other projects. We're looking at total cost, they're asking, which we would pay, would be $8,000. The recommendation would be to take that from the picking-on-the-square line item in the budget. That would still leave more than enough money for picking-on-the-square if they're able to return back to normal in May. And we'll be glad to address any questions or concerns with Council, and we've got three great gentlemen here as well that could address them.
Okay, anybody from the board want to comment? And I'm gonna get to David here in just a minute about something. Yes, yes ma'am.
Before we vote or have any motions made, I just want to state for the public and the constituents that if we vote on this tonight, as we're going to, that it be known that we have not decided on a permanent use for the Whitmire property. Since our comp plans came in, and we do meet on March the 12th, and we always discuss that, that I'm sure that topic is gonna come up again. So I'm not objecting to anyone using it in the interim, but that it just be public that we've not decided whether it be used as recreation or whatever. And so I just don't want anyone to think that we're setting some type of precedent that we're, it's going to be recreation, and that it continue to be discussed at our planning session. And I'd also just like to say, if you could, if the town manager, if this goes through, if you could just seek out if there are any grants or anything. There may not be, but if they were, that would certainly be a benefit to the town.
Any further? I think then I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for the disc golf course. It's so moved, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Hold discussion.
I'm gonna get to you.
Okay, that's fine.
I haven't forgotten you, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Oh, I was gonna call on Mr. Culpepper, he's got an idea.
Well, Mr. Morgan reached out to me in between the last meeting and this meeting about a name for it, and I didn't want to talk too much about it, because I was scared it wouldn't pass for some reason, but I'm excited it just did. With that being said, these guys want to hit the ground running with some signage and go ahead and get it done, and we're gonna need a name for the place. One of the things I thought of, and as an ode to Barbara, I know that she had researched and found out that it was really called Sunnyside, or Sunnysides. I thought Sunnyside would be an appropriate name, or Whitmire would be an appropriate name, whatever y'all want to call it, I'm fine with that. We should give them a name so they can start to work.
My wife has reminded me of Sunnyside, that that's what it was always known when she was growing up here, was Sunnyside. Would you like to make a motion that we asked the disc golfers, if they would have any objection to naming your course Sunnyside?
I love it. I agree.
I really like the sound of it. That's great.
I think it would be very appropriate, and I think it would be a nice gesture to Ms. McFray.
I agree.
I really do.
Because I never knew that until she said at the meeting that it was originally called Sunnyside.
Right.
I'm not as old as I thought I was. I don't remember Sunnyside.
Well, do we need to vote on the name, or just do I have a consensus to let you guys name it Sunnyside? All right, you got your marching orders.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Get on to it.
Appreciate you.
Great to see y'all tonight. Thanks for coming.
Have a fantastic day. We're gonna touch you.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Have a great day.
Y'all take care.
Thank you.
Okay. New business, presentation on the Quassee Center plans. Ms. Eichenbaum, welcome.
Hello, again. And I just popped a sucker in my mouth, so I wouldn't... So I apologize for that. I have a presentation, but I'm not gonna share it. The first thing I'll do is just share some blessings to all of you for Barbara's not being here, and know that she's in our thoughts, as well as yours and hers, so... So I may need to get a couple of my notes on my computer, but I'm here today to just bring you up date a little further. You guys saw it in the newspaper article, I guess it was last week, or recently, some of our plans, and I just want to make sure that you're all fully aware and clear of what we're thinking about that. So the concept is to extend people's learning and their experience beyond their time and their space right here at Nokwesi, as I'm asked to say it by the speakers in Cherokee. So, and I don't know how much y'all know, so if I'm saying things that you've already heard, I apologize. You can, I know we're all on timers, you can cut me short if you need to. So the goal is to create this full experiential opportunity for people who come here. And as it said in the newspaper, we're gonna do that by way of bringing back the agrarian landscape and aspect that was there. So the Cherokee who lived in the village of Nokwesi were farmers, and it was a commerce center and a spiritual center. And so we want to plant some traditional Cherokee crops there in sort of a demonstration farm slash garden, and then those crops would feed into a restaurant that is a Cherokee-themed, contemporary, sort of pub-style restaurant with, excuse me, with a Cherokee chef, perhaps. I want to say to you that there is no place in the United States where there is what I'm calling seed-to-service, where there's farm-to-table, production-to-service restaurant, and growing opportunity, ag opportunity, with the Native American community. This would be a first here in Franklin. And the other piece of it is, we'd be adding not just that agricultural piece, but that's sort of the nucleus of it, but also a learning center. So that's where you get the museum piece that everybody's been waiting for all along, exhibits. We've had requests by some of the people in Cherokee, on the Cherokee Council, to have a space of their available, that's like a marketplace, maybe, where Cherokee crafts could be sold. And one thing I want everybody to be aware of, Nokwesi Initiative is about culture and heritage for everyone, Appalachian culture and heritage, as well as Cherokee. And so if we did have craft space there, or if we did have more than one restaurant, maybe there's a variety of cultural opportunities here. The important thing to know is, nothing's written in stone. It is conceptual at this point. We're taking feedback. We're gonna enter into a planning process where we're gonna come back to you time and time again and say, "What do you want to see here? What do you think is the best for the Franklin community?" The economic development is phenomenal. I've got the numbers on here, but I'll have to give them to you at another time. So, and they're preliminary numbers anyhow, and we'll enter into a real business planning process. But the original just museum plan, I think planned for 41,000 visitors annually, and it would bring in about 150,000. When we add multiple revenue assets, or revenue stream assets, where we have a restaurant, and we have a marketplace, and we have a museum situation, then those numbers bump up into the millions. We create jobs. I've got in my original, sort of, as I say, preliminary numbers, 30 direct jobs, and then however many indirect. It's huge. This is an incredible opportunity. It'll bring notoriety, that's not really the right word. It'll bring awareness from across the United States, and it'll bring a lot of people. And I just want to keep you updated, and I want you guys to have, I want you to buy into this. I'm gonna ask, we're gonna create a public-private partnership for financing. I'm not asking for a lot of money, but I want you guys to be, have skin in the game on this, because the first and foremost beneficiary is Town of Franklin and the people who live here. Second is the county, and then we extend out from there. But there's gonna be a huge benefit here. So we're gonna ask to be in your budget this year for a little bit of operating funds, and I'll talk to Summer about that at some point, but I just want you to know that we will be asking, not for a huge amount, but we want you to be a part of it in the planning, in the investment, et cetera. So, any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Request for street lighting for the Scenic Ridge development. Ms. Denlow? Oh, there you are.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, what happened to the... Oh, yeah, but I don't know, do y'all have the information on the fixtures and stuff in your... This is the proposed, lie in if you need some copies. For the proposed fixtures for Scenic Ridge, since it's going to be town streets and water and sewer, these fixtures are, match what is on the town bread that y'all put in. And so here's the combination fixture and the pole. Thank you, sir. And I've been working with Duke, and with Nathaniel, and Justin, in trying to make things, you know, work out to what you presently have. The, basically, there's about 32 fixtures that Duke recommended, laid out over the entire 50 acres that we have. And the idea is, because we want to make this a walkable community, you don't want it really bright, but you want it bright enough to where someone out can walk in the evening on the sidewalks that are there, and still be able to see. And so what we have is, there's basically the, the upfront cost is about $4,000 plus tax per pole. And the, with this $4,000, it's Duke furnishing all of that. They will furnish and install the foundations, they'll furnish and install the poles and fixtures, and they'll pull all the wiring and conduit that we install as part of our original package. And there's basically a light at every intersection. And then we split up the distance in between the intersections, hopefully, to provide enough lighting so everybody can see as they walk. The 32 fixtures is about a $138,000, $139,000 commitment, of which the developer will pay, Scenic Ridge Properties. And the only thing the town will be obligated for is the cost of that. They would have had to pay if they had worked with Duke and put up a wood pole and a light fixture, which is the usage of $19.13 per month per pole. So that's kind of the picture, you know, of the overall. And what we're looking for is approval to be able to install these fixtures. And we need to do approval so that Duke, it'll take them three or four weeks to do the engineering, and we're getting to the point with construction where we'll need to know what to do ahead of time, engineering-wise, where they locate transformers and all that kind of stuff, so...
Question.
Yes, sir.
I should have read it, yes. You suggested that the town would be responsible for the cost of the wooden pole?
The, I think if I remember right, the original cost, the town and Duke would, for the wooden pole light fixture, if they furnished it and did it, it would cost the town $19 for the pole, the fixture, and the usage cost over a period of time. That's what I understood from Duke.
But right now, you're not asking, you're asking, or have you asked, and I just missed it, for the town to pay the electric bill?
That's what I'm asking.
You're saying that you want to go ahead and get the good lights put in at your own cost?
Yeah, we'll pay the upfront cost of almost $140,000. All you'll be obligated for, because they're a city street, a town street, you'd be obligated for the power bill.
Which is about, how much a month?
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may jump in really quick, it would be for a year. I'm trying to look at it as a year's perspective. It'd be $7,345.92. And one thing I know administration would like to recommend to council to allow staff to start looking at and putting together, and we had a request tonight as well, which we had looked at, but the Town of Franklin does not have a clear lighting plan or policy to follow. I know that doesn't solve our dilemma tonight, but I make that statement, and staff will be working on that to bring for your approval in the future. One thing to look at, though, is that is $7,345. That would be tacked on to the annual budget each year. One thing to look at is if the board's interested, is once all this is completed, and all the roads and utilities are turned over to the town, and there's some actual residential building there, maybe look at then, taking over the streetlights, because that is a significant... building there, maybe look at then, taking over the streetlights, because that is a significant amount yearly. But that's just administration's standpoint on it.
Well, the idea would be, I mean, from our point of view, would be to turn over the lights, the roads, the water and the sewer all at one time. In other words, we will complete the construction of roads, water, sewer, installation of fiber, everything, complete with the permit, and then, you know, we would like to turn it over all at one time.
We can't take, we can't take acquisition of sewer, though, without a year's free, maintenance-free operation, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Collins?
Neil?
Sir?
Your developer, Phil's the developer, and I know this is a, call it a win-win. I mean, these lights are going in for the express purpose of making it a good subdivision for which lots can be sold, hopefully, at a profit. Yeah, it's hopefully a win-win. It's fairly standard for a developer as they get into a project, I'm talking roads mainly, streetlights are not standard in the county, for there be a time period during the infancy of the subdivision, that the developer maintains the roads, and they'll say, once a specific number of lots, a specific amount of activity has occurred, then a homeowners association shall be formed, and then they shall be responsible ongoing for the road maintenance. Similar, you don't want to have any continuing obligation once you all, once the project's over. Understand that.
Yeah, that's the way it's originally approved.
Uh-huh. I do believe it might be reasonable if we did meet somewhere in the middle about, and I'm not no book, I don't know what, exactly how to factor, number of lots, number of something, but it does, it would seem like that it would be a developer's responsibility up to a point, after which time it would be somebody else passed on, and that's just kind of what I'm thinking about. You can tell me if I...
I mean, from us, from our point of view, when we came before the board and got approval, you know, but discussion wasn't had, so I don't know without talking to the developer himself. But, right now, the way, the idea is that when we finish the roads, the water, the sewer, we're actually, I mean, there's a major investment by the developer.
By the developer for...
To put in high-speed fiber. He's gonna run it all the way from the fore lane to the neighborhood and throughout the neighborhood, so he's got a few million dollars tied up in this. So, and to me, this is a really nice neighborhood for the town. There's nothing like it, won't be anything like it inside the town limit. And I can't answer for him about staging, I just know that we, you know, when we came, it was approved to take over water and sewer when we finished. Lighting, this is obviously new, but it also adds to the attractiveness of the neighborhood.
Mr. Horton, you said you do thirty-two, thirty-two lights, is that what you're looking at?
Yes, sir.
Thirty-two lights total. How close together are, are part of these lights?
They're about a hundred feet.
Hundred feet apart?
It just depends on the street. And this is a layout done by Duke. Again, you, with a neighborhood like this, with the view that you have, you don't want to wash out the sky with it, because it's a nice country setting. At the same time, what we're trying to do is you load the twelve-foot high pole, just like you have on the town. This was recommended by the town as the type of fixture we often try to reuse. And we're trying to, I mean, I don't have a limit. If we needed five more poles, it wouldn't be a problem for us. It's just a financial thing for the town, from a power bill standpoint.
So, a hundred feet apart, that's pretty close compared to what we see in most neighborhoods, isn't it?
Yeah, but this is a, this is a twelve-foot pole.
It's not a high-intensity...
It's not a high, it's not a, up-on-thirty-foot pole with a wide washing light. It's a, it's to kind of keep the neighborhood...
Most of the light would go down.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, just what do we pay per pole, now, per light, in the average neighborhood? Have you got a figure?
I'll be honest, they're not off the top of my head. I know, just to kind of give you an overall view, and this may not help, but, you know, it's something we do have to look at, is currently in the town's annual budget, we spend just on streetlights alone, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
And we've got a lot of areas in Franklin that have no light.
Correct.
And this is something that I'm having to wrestle with now, is the fairness of undeserved areas of this town that are basically in the dark now. Yes, Mr. Coe Pepper?
I mean, I like it, I think it looks fantastic. I want to see that neighborhood prosper, and those streetlights be in that neighborhood. I'm kind of want to live there myself now. But that being said, I don't know what our annual tax revenue from that fifty acres is right now. We're imagining that it's gonna be much more in the near future, that will easily cover the, the seven or eight thousand dollars it's gonna cost us in lighting per year. I just don't know where those two meet. I mean, I would hate for us to be on the hook for the seven or eight thousand dollars a year and not even recoup the tax money back from the parcel that would justify spending that money.
I can tell you the developer wouldn't like that either.
Yeah, that's, worst case scenario, I mean, let's say, you know, we have a market crash or something like that, and it, I mean, it sits empty, that's bad news for everybody.
It is.
Bad news for all the taxpayers if we're, if we're paying for the lights. So, I'd like to see, either from Duke, we could pay for half the lights for a couple years, or from you guys, we take it over when there's a certain amount of tax revenue coming from, or when it's, you know, whatever amount of houses are there that allow the taxpayers to not be on the hook just for street lighting for one specific neighborhood. But I, I love it. I think we need a high-class neighborhood directly in town, I'm a fan.
Well, I guess, what would, it's hard to know where to go from here. What would you want out of us, I guess? I mean, this is a significant, not only in the neighborhood, but in the lights itself, significant investment.
It is, it is for both sides.
For both.
I mean, no doubt about it. What would be, how many, how many lots are planned to be?
There's, there's fifty-nine single-family homes and thirty-two potential townhomes. We haven't done anything on the design or layout or anything for townhomes yet, so basically, we're doing the infrastructure right now. But, there's ninety-one, I think, total potential residences in this space.
Have any of the lots been sold, or are they up for sale yet?
Oh, no, we're...
When do you anticipate them being available for purchase?
Probably September, maybe, August, September, October. We're a long ways, I mean, we have probably eighty percent of the sewer on the lower level complete, still have water to run, we have power, electric, and water, fiber, all of that's still to run yet. So, if the rains don't quit, it may be next year.
Are you running natural gas up there?
I have offered that to Coal, but they haven't taken me up on it.
I mean...
It'd be great, but I don't want, what I've told them is, since it's a, you know, basically a town street, they, they need to put it in now if they're gonna put it in, because everything up there is underground. We're relocating power lines, moving everything off to the, the sides of the primer, except the one main transmission line that goes to the trailer parks on top of the hill, but, which we can't move. But, everything else is underground, and so there's, we've spent a lot of money trying to make it a really nice subdivision inside of the town itself, so. If I paid, if we paid half the nineteen, whatever, seven thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars for the first year, is that...
I don't know the answer to that, but my question is, when, when will the revalue happen on this, and when will it turn into fifty-nine parcels as opposed to one parcel of agricultural land? I mean, right now, I don't, I don't know how much it's taxed, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but...
We will...
Ostensibly, whenever it's divided up and recorded, it will become lots that will...
Yeah, we will do that in the near future. We, the idea was for us to wait on that. In construction, as always, things don't necessarily fall where they're supposed to fall. So what we wanted to do is lay out the lots so that they all centered with the road like they should. And so we waited until we get the water and sewer in, so we could locate, make sure everything's inside there right away. And so, here, but by the time we're finished and ready to turn over, we will have the lots laid out and recorded.
So, when do we expect the lights actually to be installed on the first bill to come to us? I mean, if we were to approve this right now, is it two years from now, is it three years from now, is it eight months?
No, it's about the end of the year.
Okay.
When will the sewer lines and water lines all be finished? About the same time?
Yeah, I, I mean, August, September?
What if...
We were shooting for the June, around June, but with all the rain we've had, everything's got slowed.
What if, if we have to have a year's maintenance-free operation on the water and the sewer, which is what we have to have before we accept them and get ownership of them, why don't we just put on the same schedule on the streetlights? Turn them all over at the same time? It'd be about a year once they all become hot. Does that make sense?
I'd have to ask. I mean, the water and sewer, you have your normal one-year warranty on that, but it's, you know, it's just, the problem is, is you won't have any usage until they sell lots and build, and you're talking about a year anyway, so...
You are, you are. We're not trying to be hard here.
No, I understand. I'm not either. I'm trying to do everything I can to sell this.
I think we're gonna have the same debate when we go to look at the Womack Street, put streetlights there, because it's gonna be the same situation, we're gonna be on the hook monthly for infinity.
The problem is, is we have to put them in now, or otherwise, we'll be faced the same situation, you'll have a light pole on the mountain with, with streets, and, you know, and we don't want that.
Mr. Mayor and Council, one thing that occurs to me is, this can't be the first time this, you know, particular path has been gone down, lit or not, by a municipality and a developer. I think you could, you know, you could task us with working out with, with the developer of dedication and agreement, and both sides find it acceptable, and let everybody be, have some, you know, foresight and know what it's gonna look like. And I think incorporating an idea like you had, Joe, about kind of analogizing it to development of a subdivision, the way that's always done, and turn over makes sense to me, but, that would be, it's my suggestion.
May I add something for you?
You start, Mr. Mayor.
The, I mean, for us, the normal year warranty when we turn it over is, you get a year of maintenance free. In other words, we'll look after the road, the water, the sewer for a year. Same with light poles, Duke is obligated to do that, because this is really for them. Their, their maintenance is, you know, starts soon as you cut it on. So, you will have the maintenance, what you won't have is the power usage. That's your real exposure.
Will this be governed by a homeowners association?
It will.
Would that not be the light bill that would not be going to...
No, sir, because we set it up with city, if the streets were privately held, then yes, like the water and sewer, but, but it's not. It was set up originally to be taken over by the town, both water, sewer, streets.
It's a planned, planned residential development with the idea, and it's, it's clear in the UDO that, you know, the intention to take over roads at some point is clear in the UDO. Now, how you actually, that takes dedication and acceptance when you've got it fully built out and you're happy with what's there, but...
I would like to see how we're treating street lighting with all the residents of Franklin before we commit. Now, this is just me talking, but we don't have a plan. We need a plan. We've got to have some consistency in whatever it is that we do about this. Yes, Mr. Coe Pepper?
It's a horse cart situation here. I don't have any objection to paying for the streetlights for forever, once the tax revenue's coming in that justifies us paying for the streetlights. I mean, that's the only real issue here, is I love the streetlights, I think they're fantastic, and thank you for wanting to do a high-class neighborhood. We just need to have the revenue coming in to be able to afford the streetlights. I mean, otherwise, we're gonna ask people on Womack Street to subsidize streetlights in this neighborhood without having streetlights in their own neighborhood. So I don't think anybody minds it, we just got to start getting revenue in to cover the cost of the streetlights. So, like I said, cart, horse, what comes first?
So, ma'am, build the neighborhood without a streetlight.
Yeah, I think that would be a disservice to you, me, and everybody else.
And it wouldn't serve the purpose of making them more desirable, and hopefully...
I agree. I mean, I, that's, the problem for me is, you know, what do I do? I have to have your approval before I can put it in and get Duke working, but I can't do that until you decide, so I need somehow to...
What kind of time schedule are you going to...
By the time it takes Duke to design this, which they have said is three or four weeks?
I thought they had already designed it.
Huh?
I thought they'd already designed it.
No, they did a layout based on history of the fixture. They just did a preliminary layout. They have to not only lay out the design for the lights, which is not a big deal, is the power distribution for the neighborhood, and they won't, they don't want to do any of the design for the neighborhood, power underground, until they know the lighting, too.
Are they putting pedestals in for every lot, or they, they don't anticipate, I mean, how's that...
We will run, at every lot, we will have water, sewer, where you can, all you have to do is charge them, you know, charge the fee and put the meter in.
I mean, are you doing kind of pedestal, part-on-part...
We will run, we will run conduit under the streets, over to the, from the transformer location to every lot.
Do you have the streets put in yet? I mean, have they been graded, or...
The upper has not.
How much of it is, how much of it is actually...
All of the lower, all of this, the, well, let's see, I say all, I shouldn't say that. This street is not in yet, this, but the loop and these streets are in. We just didn't want to open this up for traffic until we got ready to make sure everything was secure, otherwise, you'll have people driving around side by side.
Neil, I know projections are just projections. What is your projections for selling most of the lots, in how many months or how many years?
I have no idea. I mean, I'm not a, I'm the builder, and, you know, this is just something that I don't have a real good feeling about.
I don't know how we're in a position to take a motion on this tonight. I just look at, in ten years, you're obligating the town at seventy-five thousand dollars. And I, I just don't know, it's up to the board, but I just don't, we got to come up with a plan. We've got to be fair to our residents and to our taxpayers of the light. Yes, sir?
This train don't come down the tracks often enough to have too much of a plan. Brookwood was the only other one that I am thinking of. We just need to come up with a number. I believe that we can satisfy ourselves, twenty lots, thirty lots, some amount of activity. Once that has occurred, we know we're gonna get the more, as long tax, we're gonna get hookup fees on the water and the sewer, and we're gonna get ongoing fees there, but I do think it would be fair for there to be a time period until a level, I'm gonna say thirty lots. I don't know how long that's gonna take, but, no, we don't, we don't know. But there needs to be some middle, I believe, and that's kind of funny. But I don't, we'll never study it to know what's exactly fair.
I think I know what you're talking about. We don't want to be paying for streetlights that are empty.
That are what?
That the neighborhood...
We just want, we just want to see we have enough money coming in, so it's not a...
If we did, yeah, if we did. Yes, Mr. Coe Pepper?
Yes, we want to protect ourselves, and we're not paying for empty streets, but again, I want to reiterate, Franklin needs this kind of neighborhood. I mean, we deserve nice things, we need a nice upscale neighborhood that has streetlights in it. That being said, we need to somehow give some comfort that we will be on the hook for these streetlights indefinitely, at some point when tax revenue comes in to justify us using taxpayer dollars to pay for these streetlights. In theory, this thing built out is gonna bring in a whole lot of revenue, and the seven or eight thousand dollars in streetlights won't mean that much, but we're not there yet. So I'd like to give, give you some sort of peace of mind that we will do the streetlights at some point. We will be happy to take over and pay for them, if you're willing to build it out.
I mean, I... I mean, I can't answer that, but I mean, my gut feeling would be we would proceed with the design without the lights. I mean, it's fed from, uh, the difference is that it's fed from the transformers, the closest transformer, which is the least expensive way to go. Uh, so all I can tell you is that I'm, I can proceed with everything but streetlights. I don't, without talking to Phil.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, would, let's say in theory, would April, if you and I worked together between now and the next town council meeting, April the 5th, and come up, crunch some numbers to see, kind of give the board some options on what they could, in theory, maybe buy into how many lots it would take to ease their mind. If you, would you be agreeable, if, and if the council is as well, for you and I to work together between now and their next meeting and come up with a couple of proposals to bring back to them that also give you some time to talk to, um, the developer to see what they're comfortable with, or is this, we gotta know tonight?
The issue I have, again, is not me per se, it's Duke in the sense that they've got three or four weeks of design. So I think what I'll probably do in light of that, I I would be happy to do that. That's not an issue. It's just, is I'm gonna tell them to proceed on the assumption that we will feed it with the town providing the lights later. Because the difference is this, if it's a, if the town owns the lights themselves, then you gotta have meters and you gotta run, we'd have to run two, 3,000 feet of wire and conduit to a metering point, and you don't want that.
No, the town doesn't need.
This is the least expensive way, maintenance-wise and usage-wise, to go.
Eight thousand a year, is that what we're, this split the bill for two years and then be done with it. I mean, just something that's a model that we can look to our citizenry and say, we're, we're gonna make sure, you know, this is a good, we we want it to go. We all, we do, and I'm just trying to find some way that we can land peacefully and...
And we have to have lights here, because you said there's sidewalks, right? And there are town streets, town sidewalks. We have an obligation to have streetlights here. It's a lot better if you put them in.
Oh, we'd be all right.
And if we hire a bill. So we need to figure something out either now or next week or two weeks from now to get this done.
Well, I like the idea of what you said, but also you going ahead and pursuing. It's not that we're not going to do it. It's to try to be fair all the way around.
How about if I commit to paying the two years of the usage?
Hey, mind me up. And I don't...
That'd be $14,000 roughly.
You know, and we just have to assume the market's gonna be there. Yeah, let's do that.
I'm fine with that. I guess.
Fair.
The only problem we may have is how Duke handles the, I'll just have to get with them and work out how they normally handle with you versus us.
Motion to that effect.
Second.
Further discussion?
Motion is to, uh, for the developer to pay for the cost of the lights for the first two years, and the town would...
Once they, the the first two years of bills for electricity usage be covered by the developer, after that, the town would...
After that, the town would take up the per pole cost payable to Duke.
And we can do it, probably easier for us to go ahead and and give you the check for the first two years and let you...
I don't...
I don't think we can do it.
You don't want to do that?
I would prefer, uh, we would just prefer not to do that, because that's gonna start crossing into fiscal years, and that's counting, not mere, uh, sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
I I think, I think, I agree with, uh, Mr. Colpepper, this is, and everyone else, this is a great project. We really appreciate you all putting this together to improve the town. Uh, one thing, and the the cost is not extraordinarily high for for what the investment is going to produce in the future, I feel. The only, and and the one thing that we need to do is we need to develop some kind of a plan. If we don't have a plan and a standard to go by, this is gonna be the standard to go by. And this might be the best standard to go by, I don't know. But if somebody else comes along and says, I wanna do the same thing you did up there on Scenic Ridge, and it may or may not work. But we need to have some kind of consistent plan so that we treat every developer, uh, fair and equal and, uh, not show favoritism for one or the other.
I I'd like to add to that. We need to do it with every neighborhood. We've got neighborhoods that are underserved. They're just black holes. Their roads are crumbling in and everything else, and we need to be taking care of those people. I don't know how many of them have gotten out and ridden around in some of these areas that we've got, where the roads have just gone all too pot. They're in the dark, and we, I'll shut up. But I'm sorry, but we need to be fair. If we do it for developer, we need to do it for the people that are underserved in this town, the less fortunate.
Uh, no problem at Mayor.
Now, I'm willing to go along with Mr. Collins and, uh, and Mr. Enlow, if y'all are willing to take two, two, to pay two years' worth of the light bills. But I also expect this council, I would like to see the council, look at our other neighborhoods that need light just as well. That's my sermon for tonight. Well, maybe it's my sermon for tonight. I might have another one later on. Call and vote, please. Do what? Call for the vote. All right. What is the, uh, motion? Well, the motion is that the developer would pay the first two years of utility bills, at which time the town then would be responsible thereafter. Okay. Is that second?
I second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I don't want to add. Are you certain that the developer is okay, would be okay with that, 'cause?
Ma'am, he has so much invested here that $14,000 is...
I guess my thing.
Rather than sit and wait, it's gonna cost him more. And not putting anything in now, I mean, it, right now's the time to put it in and not cut up city streets later.
If you run natural gas up there, I'll try to cut it down.
All right. Let me see, where do you live? Oh, yeah. No, sir, I, I mean, I have tried. I've offered to to co- a natural gas. They actually, when we did the tie into the sewer and the four lanes down on 28th, ran their gas line across, but...
So I, and just to brief aside here from personal experience, I tried to get it run into my neighborhood, and what the natural gas company I was dealing with said, and I didn't have any reason to disbelieve them, was that if they didn't, their, the utilities commission prevents them from speculating. And this type of neighborhood where nothing's sold, they're not allowed to do it because it's like sub, being subsidized by all their other customers, not unlike their power conundrum. Um, so I don't, I'm not surprised they said that we can't till we get a...
But if they wanted to spend more money, they could run natural gas lines to points.
If they wanted to be one heck of a big customer up there, maybe.
Well, it's, I mean, it's fairly high density. If you've got, how many townhouse units?
Very few.
I mean, that's attractive. I mean, that's, that's a lot of gas and a little space.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, we had a second, I think you seconded. Okay, all in favor? Okay, passes, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Presentation on annual report for the Franklin Fire and Rescue. Chief Warman, welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. So what I passed up to you all, uh, just prior to the meeting, is the annual report for the fire department. It is my intention to present to you an accurate snapshot of our activity for the year 2020, to highlight some data and show our strengths and weaknesses of where we can improve. I believe that the town, both management and the community, uh, should see where their money is going and exactly what they're getting for their money. Uh, there's a lot of back information and general knowledge stuff that I'm gonna skip. You can read this later when you have some time. And if y'all can join me on page 12, I'm gonna go just in to highlight the the harder numbers, if you will. So in 2020, we had a total of 1,690 responses. Of that number, 65 of them were fires and 1,280 were medical calls. That averages out at, right at 76% of our call volume being medical calls. Uh, just of note, the national average, according to the NFPA, is only 64% medical. As to why do we run more, it it really comes down to demographics. Maybe an increased elderly population, uh, poverty levels, it just, uh, depends neighborhood by neighborhood. And down at the bottom on the chart, it shows everything broken down by the different incident response types. Moving on to page 13, you can see that our call volume is evenly dispersed throughout the week, and when they're all divided up, we're running 230 to 260 calls each day, which puts us averaging about four and a half calls per day. And down at the bottom, I have the call volume broken up by time of day, showing our response, with most of those calls being during the waking hours of the days of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And that's because most accidents are a direct result of human error or inattention. And when more people are sleeping, we have less accidents. Uh, but the point of putting all this together in this part for you is to show you that our crews are busy 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Some interesting data on page 14. Uh, we had been showing a trend in previous years of a slight increase with our total call volume. However, 2020 showed a 20% decline in call volume for us. Um, and if you look down at the bottom chart, you can see that our decline started in March, with the sharpest decline peaking in April, which directly coincides with this pandemic that we've all been experiencing. And we've had patients tell us on calls that I didn't want to call because I didn't want to go to the hospital. I was scared I was gonna catch the virus. Um, after April, we started this light tick upwards, but we're still maintaining of the low previous year's response. Page 15, we get into our automatic mutual aid agreements. Uh, as you know, we're engaged with the other fire departments surrounding the town with our automatic aid agreements, and it's just basically to improve the efficiency of firefighting across Macon County. And the chart at the bottom breaks down by department, but we received aid a total of 90 times last year and provided aid 45 times. As to why we, uh, receive more than we provide, it comes down with total number of calls and call types, and, uh, which comes down to our population density and the amount of structures that we have in our district. Excuse me. Moving on to page 16, I go into NFPA 1710, which is the standard for organization and deployment of fire suppression operations, emergency medical operations, and special operations to the public. This kind of outlines how fire departments do business, and one of the things it provides is response times requirements. And in summary, for a medical call, we have six minutes to arrive on scene, and that's from the time the call is received at the 911 center. For what they classify a single resource, which is typically one engine, maybe a car fire, brush try, a brush fire, we have six minutes and 20 seconds. And for a full assignment, a basic, uh, working structure fire, which is two engines, one ladder, and one chief, we have 10 minutes and 20 seconds to arrive on scene with all those apparatus. And according to NFPA, we're required to meet that standard 90% of the time. If you flip to page 17, you'll see how we stack up against those numbers. On medical responses, we met the mark 61%. On single resources, 68%. And full assignment, only 39%. So the main question is, why didn't we meet the standard? And there's a few different issues that play into that, and they they overlap each other. First of all, operating out of one station, which is not direct center of our total territory, poses challenges. Uh, those challenges are further exacerbated by the narrow, windy roads in our rural districts. Uh, some of them are bad enough to get up in a pickup truck, more or less a very large fire apparatus. Our current staffing levels of only two paid personnel on shift 24/7, that limits our response capabilities. With more personnel, we're able to respond more apparatus, and it also allows us to split crews for minor calls and take care of more things at one time when we have overlapping or back-to-back calls. You know, if we have a, an emergency in the southwestern corner of our district, and as soon as we finish, the next one's northeast, there's no way we're gonna get there on time. And the overlapping back-to-back calls in general, they overwhelm our resources. One call takes everybody out of play. Um, and last year, we had 258 calls that overlapped, which was 17% of our call volume. So those are the things we're working against to try and hit the standards in NFPA 1710. We'll turn over to page 18. I kind of explained why all this information matters. It's not just about meeting the standard and checking a box on a piece of paper. A structured fire can double in size every 30 to 60 seconds. With all the, the lightweight construction that's being used nowadays, the synthetic materials inside of structures, they're burning faster and hotter than they ever have before. Additionally, a person is not breathing, brain tissue starts to die at about four minutes with no oxygen. So when we're talking about lives and property, the rest seconds really do matter. So that's why this standard is so important to meet. I do want to point out, just being completely transparent, NFPA 1710, as it's written, pertains to career fire departments. NFPA 1720, which is the same standard for combination and volunteer departments, is where we fall. Um, those response times are different. It's broken down based on urban, rural, suburban, uh, and they're more lenient. And we stack up better in those response times, but I didn't extrapolate that data for you, because if you remember, a few months ago, we had our ISO inspection with the department insurance. Guess what standard they grade us on? 1710. Uh, I've called and spoke with them the last couple of weeks, and basically, that's just the standard they use, and it's applied to everyone. So that's the standard we have to strive to meet. Um, going into some more highlights of our areas or our strengths, on page 19, I get into our training. Our members obtained 4,077 total hours of training last year. That breaks down to about an average of 105 hours per person. Uh, these hours that you see in the chart, I've got it broken down by category, uh, these are what we call continuing education hours, the hours we have to do to maintain what we already have and keep our skills home and whatnot. If you look over on page 20, I get into certifications. A new person walking in the door today, if they want to become a certified firefighter, is looking at 450-plus hours of training. Um, on top of that huge commitment of time, we also have the obstacle of class availability. So it could take a person three to five years to reach certification. That's on their off time when they're not working and, uh, other life obligations. So broken down for you, what we have listed as 20 firefighters that are currently certified, nine drivers that are certified, and six officers that are certified. And as you get into these, if you can go advanced, then there's even more hundreds of hours of certification. But the employees that we have that are not certified, they are working diligently towards their certification. Uh, just this month, we're sending six people over to McDowell to get some classes. So we're always striving to get better. Uh, these are just some of the highlights of this report. I realize it's, uh, quite a few pages of information to digest, so anytime after the meeting, after you've read it, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. Anytime, I'd be more than glad to answer any questions, and I'll entertain any questions now if you have any.
One question. First off, Chief, this is a well-done report.
My, my administrative assistant did it.
Uh, that being?
Me.
I was gonna question you on that.
You copied somebody.
It's not my budget.
Just roughly, since so many of our medic, our calls are medical calls, what percentage of our, I know that everybody's a first certified first responder, pretty much, are they not? But what about EMT level?
I don't have the exact number.
Oh, I'm just curious, but we do have...
Most everyone is certified medical responder.
Oh, medical responder.
But we make EMT optional. Our paid staff, um, we make sure we have at least one EMT on shift each day. But I don't have the exact numbers on the certification, because that, uh, to get EMT certification is about another 200 hours of training as well.
Yeah. First, used to call them first responders. I guess they don't use that term anymore.
It changed. It used to. Used to, first responder is what you were if you failed the EMT test, and they let you drive an ambulance to the hospital.
That's true, you could drive. Okay, anybody else got any questions, the chief foreman? Very well done, sir. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Unless y'all want to take five real quick minutes, if not, we'll go ahead and proceed and... I'm going to keep going, all right. Discussion on Town of Franklin FMLA policy, Family Medical Leave Act. Mr. Talent, you're up, sir.
Thank you. So what you have in front of you, we've just, we've been going over our FMLA policy. And in substance, nothing is changing with what's in front of you, since it's a federally mandated program. What we ran into with our policy that's on the books, though, is, at the end of that 12 weeks, we didn't have anything in writing of what does the employee do now? Can the employee request an extension? You know, how's that work? So we ran it through ordinance review. We've had several people sit in, Mr. Culpepper as well. And so if you just look in front of you, the wording that we wanted to present to you tonight basically gives the town manager the authority to grant an extension under certain circumstances of FMLA if an employee were to need it. And it can also be denied depending on the case, the job requirements, how important it may be if that position's unfilled. So yeah, really, there's not a lot to this. But we did want to present it to you and let you mull it over and see if we can move forward with it tonight or potentially at your next meeting, if you need some thought to consider.
Is there any reason for not voting on it tonight? Since we pretty well hashed it out. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt it as Mr. Talent has presented.
I'll move.
Second? We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
You're in favor?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Saw you late there. Discussion on Franklin Employee-Elected Payroll Deductions, Mr. Talent, sir.
Yep. So the next thing that you have in front of you, again, doesn't really change much substance for employees. But the wording basically gives the finance officer the authority to deny any payroll deduction that could put an employee into a negative pay status. So this would make it where an employee couldn't over-leverage their deductions to the point where they don't take home a paycheck. This would give Ms. Bishop that authority that if a loan deduction or a additional insurance deduction were to come through, and that employee can't sustain it, that she could actually deny that payroll deduction.
Discussion for the board?
If you have any questions, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, I apologize for being actually busy at work, but... The loans. It has been the practice in the past for an employee to be able to have a loan for a vehicle taken out of its paycheck. And it really says, it's got to be a credit union. Now, would get rid of that?
Yeah, that would be up to the board, if that's something that you all want to consider.
What's presented, what's the...
So you've got two options. So you've got the one where it would, you've got option A, which would add what's bolded there. The finance officer has the authority to deny payroll deduction withholding requests. If said request would cause the employee to enter into a negative pay status. Your other option could be to move away from that to where you don't have your finance officer serving or any other member of the town serving as a financial advisor. The other option to do is to get rid of one sentence where it says, "With the authorization of the employee, the finance officer may also make payroll deductions for credit union payments and other deductions for qualified programs." If you admitted that entire sentence, that still should vest your finance officer with the authority to make the appropriate deductions for 401K, group insurance, and elected supplementary insurance. It just does away with her serving as basically a financial advisor between the employee and the state credit union.
Or any lender.
Correct.
First of all, it seems to be like it would be discriminatory to have just the credit union. And I don't know why, I mean, it comes out of your check now if you want to. You know, why would it automatically come here? It puts us in a spot we don't need to be in, I think. And I just don't believe it's where the town should be. If they want to have direct pay of a bill, let it come out of their checking account after the town payroll check is, you know, is direct deposited too. Let them just work it that way. I don't see why we at the town would be in the middle of this. I know historically we have. Don't seem like a practice I'd like to continue.
Well, is that something that's old, that's probably outdated? Because, I mean, people used to actually send checks in and stuff or whatnot? And so, I mean, pretty much, I mean, you even get a better rate at the credit union if you let them direct, if you let them direct deposit.
Seems like an unnecessary burden on town staff to have...
It had its time, and it had its place, I don't think it does now. If there are a few out there already doing it, let them run their course. Let it go ahead, you know, don't perpetuate it, but don't make somebody jump out of the way to have to make a bunch of hoops. I'd like to see this work out of that.
I agree with Joe. I think that we don't want to get into the point of trying to micromanage the personal finances of our employees. If they want to have a payroll deduction directed from their checking account, that's fine. We pay them for the work that they do, and it's up to them to spend it the way they feel like they need to spend it, and for us not to tell them how and why they should or should not do that. So I agree with Joe. I think it's probably better for us just to get out of that picking and choosing altogether.
And it's totally the will of the board. So thank you for the...
Which motion accomplishes that?
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may, and Mr. Attorney, please feel free. I think the cleanest motion would be to make an amendment to the personnel policy that does away with the following sentence. "With authorization of the employee, the town finance officer may also make payroll deductions for credit union payments and other deductions for qualified programs." To admit that entire sentence would clean this up.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
I would.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and a second. All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, discussion on NCDOT Depot Street Sidewalk Project. Madam Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. What you have before you is, we had looked at this probably back in 2015 or 2016. And the board at the time was under the impression with NCDOT that the sidewalk project, and I've passed out a map that most of you should have, that the NCDOT proposed sidewalk project on Depot Street would be for both sides of the street there. It was not. So what they're asking, if the town would like to do the side that is labeled, if you'll notice on the map, it would be on your red map, on the red portion that says sidewalk with utility move, that's there in front of Macon Furniture Mark, which I know the board at the time, that was kind of the whole push to get this done, because that's almost a natural, people utilize that side as well. This agreement that we originally entered into for the $58,800 that we're going to take from Powell Bill, that allows us to continue to accomplish that goal. And it also allows the town to be able to relocate the utilities under DOT's expense. However, if the town DOT had misquoted this at the time, if the town wishes to move forward with doing sidewalks on both sides, as you can see in the email from the district engineer, it would require an additional amount of $148,000. It's at the recommendation of administration. You continue on the path of the $58,800 that we've already committed. Just due to the nature of the large amount it would cost, that would hit your Powell Bill to try and do the other side as well.
Okay, any questions from the board? If not, we'll call for a motion.
I'm a big fan of sidewalks, but I can't justify the extra expense just to have both sides done. So I'll move that we go with the original plan and just have DOT do the one side, and we'll pay the necessary match.
Do we need a vote if it's already been committed to at one point?
They would like one, just to clarify that this is the next two options, since the original agreement was to do both sides, but it was a misconstrued figure at the time.
And three-quarters of what they would be doing on the other side would be through people's parking lots anyway, that are already hard surface.
I feel like that area is still evolving somewhat anyway, so, you know what I'm saying?
Is this just a vote to reconfirm the board's prior commitment to this?
Yes, sir.
If that's what your motion is. Is there a second?
I did not hear. Oh, we have a second now, yeah, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of Mr.... Yes, sir?
I'm just voting in favor.
We all get organized. Okay. Madam Manager, I think that motion passed.
Thank you.
Discussion on restroom at Whitmire property, Madam Manager.
Yes, Mr. Council and Mr. Mayor. So what you have before you tonight is, Mr. Collins, Councilmember Collins and I have been working on this, and he actually brought up a really good point. With the proposed disc golf course at the Whitmire property, we will need to look at providing some, I think it would be courteous to provide some type of restroom facility. So what you have before you is a couple of options. The first, we have been discussing with sunrise sanitation. To rent a portable bathroom, it would be $110 a month. And this price includes weekly cleaning and pickup of the facility. And when I say pickup, it would be actually to clean it and dispose of the waste. The total cost for 12 months would be about $1,320. But again, this would be for a rental. You also have the option, and I've put together a packet, if the town wanted to just go ahead and purchase our own restroom, which would be a portable restroom as well. The cost on average range from $624, and you can see some of the photos attached, upwards to $2,218.86. And you'll see that information attached in your packet that I've handed out. If you wish to move forward with purchasing this, the only other thing the town would need to do is to look at purchasing a nozzle to go on our sanitary sewer truck to be able to pump the waste that's accumulated. So that would be a one-time expenditure of $1,249.92. And the nozzle's needed for the restroom. So just wanted to throw that out there for the board to consider. If that's something you're even interested in, in providing a restroom facility. But it was definitely a point well noted.
I think that most of the public are used to porta-johns now, and they're pretty much a staple. I have had a little experience with the ones that we have down at our little flying field. And it's, they come once a week, clean it. We don't have to fully visit it all. And so I just, I just think that in the long run, we're saving money. And I just don't know that any of our town employees have the time to go clean this thing and pump it out.
If the unit becomes damaged, they just replace it automatically?
Yes. They're maintenance-free.
They furnish paper, too?
Yes. No, they do, seriously. They bring hand sanitizes and everything.
Samuel, if you've got apparatus low enough CFM to pump one of those, would that pull the bottom out open? If you were to buy one, we've already bought one.
We had reached out to the company that wants to provide it, and that was...
The nozzles what cuts the pressure down?
Yeah, the device that they said could be used potentially to do that.
Those nozzles expensive, too. Okay, any further discussion?
Oh, there's plenty of discussion. It sounds like there is an understanding that we would like to get some, something there. It's hard to invite somebody to come to a place like that and not give them something. And so the real question is, do we buy or rent? Is that a real rent?
I think so.
I, you know, if it's a one-year deal, maybe we could start off with it. And I think in the future, with the events that we have, with our ability, if we would have gotten set up and, you know, bought one that had maybe the $1,200 model, I think we would end up using it in the long run for more events and such as that. But we could always jump in next year if we wanted to try it for a year with, you know, with the rental. I'm not as, I don't have a huge dog in the fight, because we can change, you know, it's really month to month. We don't even commit it to a year. I just want us to see, and I'd want us to go ahead and have a slab poured while they're pouring the nine holes, we have the concrete trucks, have a nice little slab area, and maybe some method of strapping it down or something. So back in when I was teenagers, we would go turn it over.
That's my point. The kid vandal in me, if I lived near Sunnyside Disc Golf Course, I would have tried to tip it over or threw a cherry bomb in it or something like that. That being said, we don't know how people are going to react to a bathroom up there. I think we're money ahead if we rent the thing and test the water out. If we want to do something more permanent and put a stage there, put something else there, then go with a purchase.
You need some action on that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I think so, just put them on...
I'm looking at the motion that we rent one at the interim, and see how that works out. Eventually, we're going to have a hard position, and then we revisit that for a purchase. But to start off with, I think it'd be better to go ahead and rent. So I would move that we do that.
All right, we have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor? And that's the rent.
I guess it depends on who you're renting from. I don't know if I have a conflict or not. So I thought, I was under this pressure, and it was your purview that you just needed a consensus from the board, was my understanding, but...
You don't have a direct financial...
And I'm there.
Summer has...
Well, I was...
Summer has the authority.
You're not the voluntary gaseous guy.
No, but I, they're...
You're not in the conflict of interest.
Well, it's immediate family, so...
That doesn't matter.
You don't know the likes, as we all consider it, it's immediate family.
You're not getting part of that 110.
The board's not committing to a certain group...
I don't want the appearance of any.
Sure.
That's the only reason I'm asking.
Can we put a streetlight next to it so we can see to get in and out of it? I don't want to.
Okay, I think that passed.
Yeah, it passed.
Chief Harold, I have a question I need to ask you. What is the statute of limitations for someone putting a cherry bomb in?
Asking for a friend? Pass on him to a zebra or a...
You better quit telling us about it.
I openly confess my sins so that we can remedy them. I mean, I'm not trying to hide...
A mispent youth. Okay, legal discussion on Town of Franklin Solicitation Ordinance. Counselor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. Several times in the past few years, the topic has come up about whether or not the town could get some regulation in place that would address problematic panhandling of solicitation of not just donation, but donation to the person asking for it, and sometimes in an aggressive and unwelcome manner. Right around the same time that we started to have that discussion, there was a Supreme Court case that kind of put some emphasis on some other modes of free speech that we don't normally think of as protected. But one of those was panhandling that doesn't directly impact the individual. And that caused us to kind of slow down and take our time in looking at it. Chief Harold has brought it back around for discussion, and I want to ask him to share with you some of the experiences that the department has had with individuals aggressively panhandling at folks. What I have put in front of you, and we're not asking for approval tonight, please take until next month or however long you need to chew on the language and make sure you're comfortable with it. But it's some language that at least two other municipalities now, and I think several others most likely have adopted. I think this is, Chief Harold and I have talked, I think this is some language that school of government has sort of blessed, is finding that balance between what's protected speech and what you can't just, because you don't like that people are asking for money, sort of ban it, and acting in a way that protects your citizens from aggressive acts of others that are coming up to ask them for funds.
Does the permit thing that the town did a while back, that doesn't cover? I mean, anybody soliciting a donation, they don't need to, they have to have a permit?
No, sir. What that covers is somebody standing in on a sidewalk or in a street.
Okay.
Asking for donations. And that is covered and is under state law regime as far as I know, it's still solid. But this would be individuals that don't have any connection... But this would be individuals that don't have any connection to anything and may come up and, and ask for funds.
Leave it on the sidewalk or wherever. Got you.
Yes, exactly. So Chief Harold, did you want to share some with the council about the sort of genesis of the concern?
As Mr. Haynes was saying, basically this does not prohibit the people that are following the solicitation permit the proper way and obtaining it the proper way. We're talking about our vagrants, to be specific, that are costing probably many of you. So this is no surprise, I'm sure to most of you, that have either been victims or have observed it yourself, where they come up to people passing motorists or stop motorists at some of our shopping centers, to include homes or residents, where they are coming up and begging for money or allegedly want to get work to unfortunately support their bad habits. We need something that we can actually, a tool where we can take the proper action. At this time, we have the, and so that literally ties our hands and we get calls routinely an average of about five a month, where people are contacting us or we observe this aggressive panhandling and can't really do anything about it. So that would be the thing that I would try to point out as, as I personally experienced it numerous times since being appointed as your chief. And we need a tool to be able to try to provide more safety for our citizens.
So some of the constitutional guidelines that are around this, and as I said, there's, there were some cases, there was a case that made everybody kind of slow down and pause and rethink their approach to this. I think what's clear is that you need to advance a compelling governmental interest and a narrowly tailored way of approaching that, that concern. The, you know, public safety and when your law enforcement agency is telling you there are public safety concerns here, and then narrowly tailoring when you're going to consider that to be, to be violated, which we've tried, this, this ordinance tries to do by saying it's going to be in the vicinity of ATMs, it's going to be in people's personal dwellings or vehicles, things of that nature, or aggressively into their person in a way that a reasonable person would feel like they are being, in, threatening somebody. So that's, that's what this does. I will also offer that, again, and as Chief Harold pointed out, to me, this has been adopted by a couple different municipalities now. Between now and April, we can certainly review and vet with them their experience with it and see what, you know, in terms of enforcement, there's any problems. And certainly, I don't know of any lawsuits about anything, but we'd look into that too.
So where are we? We need a motion tonight or we're just going to hold off?
Just review for the next minute.
I would just suggest, and I do, I think that it's, it's a good, it's just better business for you all to take some time if it's not an urgent thing and review and, and bring back questions.
Okay.
That'd be my suggestion.
Before we go around the table, that takes care of all the business, I've got a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. Right now, there is a pot of money available for affordable housing, low-income housing through Region A. If y'all know anybody that wants to make an investment and finds a couple acres of land and want to do something, that money is just sitting unused. And apparently, there's quite a bit of it. So I just pass that along. Region A has it. Also, Region A has a great revolving loan problem. Not problem, what's the word? Program, program that we may want, if anybody ever approaches you, steer them to Region A, Sarah or Russ. The other one is that the TDA funding is coming to the forefront again. It started by the city of Asheville. They want to be able to use some of the millions of dollars they generate from the occupancy tax for things other than just marketing. They're getting all this money and they can't handle the tourists that they've got now. They want to be able to use it for infrastructure, the things that tourists take a toll on. And I think we could certainly do the same here, if the lead, so if any of you have anything to do, if you're talking to Kevin or Carl, express your opinion on it because I think it has a real good possibility of changing back. The other is the, it's, it's very possible that we will not have an election in November if the state board gets it way, it gets its way. They want to move the municipal elections to even number of years. So that could mean that those of you that are up for reelection this year may, may wind up with an extra year. I don't know how that's going to be handled, but that's the state board of elections that's talking about doing that. So let's go around the table. Mr. Horton, you have anything, sir?
Well, nothing really earthshaking. I did get a COVID-19 shot this past week and I'd like to give a shout out to the health department folks over there, plus the National Guard, EMTs, with all of them working together. It was a very smooth process, called, set it up, went through there and it took about 25 minutes from beginning to end. So I think we're moving ahead. The good news is that they've increased our allocation of COVID vaccines from, what, 300 to 500 now. Hopefully it'll go a little more, so hopefully we'll get more people doing it. That's not to say that we're out of the woods. I just had in the last month, two folks that we knew very, very well pass away from, from that and they weren't that terribly old. So it's still a serious problem and I want to make sure that we don't, we don't feel like we're getting complacent by ignoring it. So if you get a chance to get a vaccine shot, I would urge you to take advantage of it.
The, the process was very seamless. It was very well done.
Yeah.
So pass that word along, Mr. Lewis, to some of the deputies. They were really, really helpful too.
If you've seen them standing out in the rain Friday, you know how much it rained.
Yeah, I know.
Them and EMS and health department, National Guard, everyone stood out in that rain from eight o'clock in the morning until six o'clock that afternoon.
Sure did.
So, so, yeah, absolutely shout out to all of them.
Pass that word along to the town board. Anything you want to bring out? Bring up?
No, just keep barbering your thoughts, huh?
Yeah, it's not a good situation. Okay, Ms. Mashburn?
I'm good.
Ms. Culpepper?
The prayers and the positive energy towards Barbara.
I know, I know, it's the truth.
Pass.
Mr. Collins, okay. That seems to take care of all the business. And now the announcements. The Town of Franklin Strategic Planning Station will be this, not this Friday, Friday week, four o'clock until seven o'clock here. Yes, ma'am?
And Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may, I've heard from a couple of you, I've started a list of some items that I know the board wants to talk about. But between now and preferably the end of this week, so Monday of next week, if you would, if you, you've got something you want to talk about or bring to the forefront of this meeting, please reach out to me and call me, email me. I'm actually going to be having a discussion tomorrow at 2:30 with Russ. He's on board to do everything. We will, I will provide dinner that night here in the boardroom. But again, if you think it's something you really want to bring up, please just reach out to me. I've heard from a couple of you and we'll, we'll make sure we get those items on there.
Excellent. Okay, town offices will be closed Friday, April the 2nd in observance of Good Friday. Anything else? If not, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor? We're adjourned.
Quick on the draw, Diana.
Good meeting, guys.
I'm ready for it.